Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorain County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who's got the dog?
I've got a dog who's got the microphone. It's right there in front of Ted.
Oh, it's in front of me.
Thank you. Okay, here we go. I give the leash, I'm going to be part of it.
There's no leash.
Good morning, welcome to the October 25, 2007 Lorain County Board of Commissioners meeting. Commissioner Blair, the dog's yours.
This is really Lori's dog. Lori, look at this.
I know.
There's two of them. I can't talk and chew gum.
He's there, that's better.
This week's featured pet at the Lorain County kennel is a male Pomeranian. He was picked up on Maddox Road in North Ridgeville. He is in cage number 29 and is eligible for adoption on Tuesday, October 30th, and he has a twin. There's two of them. Now, how could you resist a face like that? Looks like a good box. Aw, look, he says, "Anybody out there want me?"
Aw, I do.
Yeah, I know. He's going to have a little dog kennel next week, starting October 30th. Please stop by our dog kennel, there's lots of dogs out there looking for an owner. We used to have a kids book, I forget what the name of it was, I used to read it to my kids, and it was about the dogs were waiting for someone to come, and it was a little boy coming to get his dog, and it says, "Is this my boy?", and the boy would go by and he'd leave the dog, and then somebody else would come by and say, "Is this my boy?", it gets so sad at the end, I almost cried. So anyway, "There's a dog out there for you, please stop by, thank you."
I'll go feed it whenever you want. It's your dog kennel.
Oh, it's my dog kennel.
Thank you, Commissioner Blair.
We follow the rules.
We have to take two.
Our quote for today is actually a very good one, we received from Deborah Tansey, dropped me off a quote she thought would be good today, figuring we're doing this independent evaluation analysis. Thought for the day, from Albert Einstein, "We can't solve problems by using the same kind of thinking we used when we created them." I love that quote, I actually read that this morning. Thank you, Deborah.
And that's real audience participation.
Madam Clerk?
Shara Davis from PSI for the Independent Evaluation Analysis PowerPoint presentation.
Good morning, Shara, and thank you.
Thank you very much to the Board of Commissioners for this wonderful opportunity to work with Lorain County Government. What I'd like to do is give you all an overview of the findings resulting from the independent evaluation, financial evaluation, but to start with, just for the benefit of everybody here, to make sure that everybody understands the nature of this study, I'd like to go through very quickly the objectives and then move from there into the actual findings. We had, let's see, five overall objectives for this independent evaluation. One was to assess the sources and patterns of county revenue, really to look at how and the extent to which county revenue streams are changing over time for Lorain County Government and other county governments in the state of Ohio. Also, to analyze sources of increased expenditures, and I think that's an important piece. We really, this kind of is the crux of the report, it consumed most of the diagrams and the text. We really tried to drill down into county expenditures to look at, again, what are the sources of increased spending in recent years for Lorain County. The other thing that we wanted to do was identify or at least take a look at the impact of state policy changes on both revenue streams for Lorain County Government and expenditures. And then we also tried to do some projections on expenditures based on the more detailed analysis that we had done into the future. And all of this, all of this was really to take a look at the implications for future financial stability of Lorain County. So those were the overall objectives. Let me start by going through just some of the information relative to revenue streams. Just a very quick snapshot of revenue totals, our study period, I should mention, was from 2000 to 2006, and we actually went to the county budget office, a huge thanks to Lisa Hobart and David O'Connor for their assistance. They, when we asked for numbers, they provided them, no questions asked, they were wonderful, and also provided that information in an extremely timely manner for us, so we appreciate that. Again, revenue totals, just to give people a snapshot of what the revenue totals for county government look like, and I should mention too, this is in relation to the general fund only, but $48 million was the total revenue for Lorain County in 2000, that was up in 2006 to almost $57 million. The average rate of change, however, over those six years, over that six-year period was only a 2.9%. So, you know, what that tells us is that revenue streams for county government have not been increasing at alarming rates over the, in recent years. We're also going to revisit that a little bit later in the presentation so that we can look at those revenue totals in relation to actual expenditures during that same timeframe. But again, let's take a look at some of the sources of revenue for county government. Certainly, sales tax in 2006 comprised about 27%, about $15.5 million came from sales tax. Other category was the second-largest stream of revenues. The other category includes things like refunds, service charges, fines and things from the clerk of courts, the law library, rent income, just some of those other miscellaneous income that come into county government. Again, that other category was 17% of all revenue streams in 2006. In 2006, local government funds, the local government funds, which are really a form of revenue sharing from the state of Ohio back to local governments, in 2006 was 14%. And again, I'm going to go into a little bit more detail about the stability of some of these revenue streams in just a moment, but again, in 2006, that was 14% of all revenues. Real estate tax was about 13%, around $8 million. Interest income in 2006 was about $6.5 million, comprised about 11% of county revenues. Property conveyance was 9%. Fees generated from the treasurer, the auditor, and the records office comprised about 7%. And then LGR assistance, which is a supplement to the local government funds from the state of Ohio, was about 2%. You know, one of the things when we looked at this, when we looked at these revenue streams, that I think becomes very apparent is that the county is not sustained in any way, shape, or form by one significant source of revenue. And what this says, again, for future financial stability, is that the loss of any one of these revenue sources is going to have some significant consequences on county spending over time. So let's take a quick look at how these revenues have changed over time. Again, that was, you know, one of the primary objectives of this work. What you see here is that the sales tax has been a good source of income over the years, pretty stable, has actually increased a little bit between 2000 and 2006, that's the blue line that you see at the top. The local government funds, however, which have been the, really, the second-largest source of revenue for county government, what you see on this graph with the pink line there, the squares and the pink line, is that there has been a decrease from the state of Ohio in local government funds. In fact, we looked at some of the state policy, and for four of the years that we had studied, 2000 to 2006, there was actually a freeze on local government funds, which means that in 2006, Lorain County Government was basically operating at below 2002 levels for the local government funds. The other thing is, what you'll see, what you don't see on this graph is, per policy changes, again, by the state government, they last year had redefined how those monies are distributed back, and so what, if we were to add 2007 to this graph, what you would see is a sharp drop in the local government funds and the loss of about $3.5 million to Lorain County Government. So, a sustainable revenue stream for county government, no, has not been so in recent years.
Shara, can I stop you for one second?
Sure.
I thought I read in here, even before they cut our local government funds with the freeze, it was, it cost the county $2 million?
Yes.
Just with the freeze?
Yes, that was just with the freeze, not including then the shift in 2007 with the $3.5 million cut.
So really, $5.5 million?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct, that's going to be the economic consequence over time.
It really wasn't a five, it cost us $2 million accumulatively, so it wasn't a $5.5 million shift. So over the years that the freeze was on, accumulatively, we would have had $2 million more, but it wasn't, we would have had $2 million in any one year.
Right.
Okay, so...
Over the life from 2000 to 2006, it was $2 million?
Right, I think that would equate to about $400,000, $300,000 a year or somewhere in that neighborhood, so 3.5 and maybe 300,000 would be 3.8 if we were looking at it as an annualized expenditure, correct?
Correct, correct. Yeah, the loss of the $2 million was over that four-year period where, in fact, there was a freeze. So if you assume the former levels of funding for local government funds, and then the loss over that period of time, yeah, it would equate to about $2 million. So, and of course, you know, one of the things that the state did when they put that freeze on was there were no provisions for county governments to make up the lost revenue, you know, at that point in time. But the shift in the policy for how those funds were dispersed really did have a $3.5 million actual effect on your county budget, yes. In addition to local government funds, one of the things that you see on the bottom of this, and we could have really even lumped in the LGR assistance with the local government funds, but we kept them separate for purposes of the analysis, the local government funds, you see, they're the bottom line on this graph, it's the Rust graph, not a significant source of income, but it still was about a million and a half revenues, income for the county. The other thing that we noted, and again, looking through some of the state policy changes, is I believe that those dollars are slated to go away within the next couple of years, so the LGR assistance, is that right, Mr. Cortez?
Well, they're going to combine them into one fund, and the funding level has been secured through 2008, but it's a good time to point out that there has been no movement yet to pass legislation guaranteeing anything past the end of 2008. Hopefully that they will, you can remember the last time they tried to take this away from us completely through lobbying of the state legislature from all the county governments and local governments, they did pass a two-year bill in the House guaranteeing for an additional, those additional two years, but there is nothing past 2008. So depending on the financial condition of the state and what we're able to get them to do, and there's no lobbying movement underway yet, and there is no guarantee in place past that.
Correct, and we'll add too, the need for that lobbying with the state government with one of these other sources of revenues in just a minute. If you look at interest income, which is some of the investments that the county has made through the investment committee, that income has fluctuated, I mean, you can see the huge dip, has gone back up in recent years, but, you know, again, in terms of looking towards the future stability of that revenue, I think what you're going to see is that's always going to follow some of the economic cycles. So you can probably, you know, anticipate that at some point in town, that time, that's going to dip, you know, back down. But again, has been one source of revenue, and I should mention, is probably one of the more entrepreneurial emphases of Lorain County Government to actually go out and make some investments like this for financial stability for the county. The turquoise line on this graph actually represents real estate taxes, and if you look at that, the real estate taxes actually increased in the 2001, 2002 period, up in 2003, and has had some incremental increases since that point. However, again, when you look at state public policy, one of the things that we know is that the new tax laws that have been put into place through the state of Ohio have taken certain collectible property and business tax authority away from county governments. Now, what they did was they put kind of a whole harmless provision into that tax law change so that Lorain County is currently not losing any dollars at this point in time. However, that provision in the state policy runs out in 2010, and just like the local government funds, there has been absolutely no additional provision put back into state policy to say, you know, "Here's an additional funding stream that the county governments will have from the state of Ohio to make up for what could be some potential losses." Again, it's uncertainty, given public policy, but to date, absolutely nothing has been addressed. And so again, 2010 is, which is certainly in just a very short few years, is the date that this county could be impacted. Counties, county governments across the state could in fact be impacted. The purple and green lines here, property conveyance and fees from auditors, the auditor, treasurer, and recorder's offices, those revenue streams have been fairly stable over the years, but again, when you look at the sources of revenue or the amount of revenue that that produces for the county, certainly not the same amount as you would see with some of the sales tax, real estate taxes, local government funds, and other sources. So in a nutshell, what does that mean in terms of change in revenues for Lorain County Government? Really, there's vulnerability around two of the four largest sources of revenue for the county, the local government funds and the real estate taxes in 2010. Worst-case scenario is that, you know, you could potentially see an impact of a quarter of all county revenues from those two sources of funds. Now again, you know, there's hope that the state legislature, that the General Assembly will put some kind of provision back in before 2010 hits, but it's an uncertainty at this point in time. I think what's most important out of this revenue analysis, again, is two points. One, again, that the county needs all of these sources of revenues to sustain, you don't see one source of revenue that comprises 50% or 75% of this budget. And the second is that there's no evidence at this point in time, given state policy changes, that there's going to be any increase in county revenues in the near future. Let me shift real quick to the expenditures, because again, this is where we spent a lot of time trying to figure out what has been the source of increased expenditures for Lorain County Government in recent years. Again, like the revenue table that we gave you, this just really takes a look at what expenditure totals look like. They were about $42 million in 2000, up in 2006 to approximately $60 million. If you look at the rate of change over the years, that comes out to about an average of 6.4%. And again, that's much higher than the 2.9% rate of change in revenue. So expenditures are increasing at a rate higher than what revenue streams are able to accommodate at this point in time. Sources of expenditures, before I go into some of these sources of expenditures, I think it's worthy to note that county government, unlike some of our other local governments, are certainly subject to complete legislative authority by the state, and I think that's very, very important, it helps frame, you know, some of these figures that we've been looking at. It also means that county governments have limited taxing authorities, certainly at this point in time, county governments can utilize sales tax and property tax, but in essence, county governments have to do what the state of Ohio and the General Assembly tell them to do. Are there discretionary decisions, certainly that the Board of Commissioners can make, absolutely, but a huge majority of county expenditures are related to what the state is saying the county must be responsible for. You know, traditionally, when county governments were set up by the state of Ohio, they comprised an auditor, a treasurer, a recorder of deeds, the sheriff, the prosecutor's office, the courts, the coroner, and the board of elections. You know, what you'll see is, you know, that was back in 1822, and today, basically, you still have the same format, the same structure for county government. The state has made, certainly county governments, and again, we'll go into a little bit more detail in this with the expenditure analysis, but the state has made county governments responsible for elections, for veteran services, for the justice system, a whole slew of public services, and again, these are not discretionary decisions that county governments can make about their spending patterns. So what we did was, we went into the general fund, we went into existing line items, we took a look at those line items, and we actually aggregated some of those line items back up into categories, logical categories of spending that we thought would make sense for people to be able to understand the breakdown of Lorain County spending. One of those categories was the criminal justice system. Now, when I say the criminal justice system, that does not include building maintenance for the justice center or the courthouse, it doesn't include capital improvements, the new justice center, the jail, it does not include insurance and pensions, insurance on the buildings, the vehicles, on employees within the criminal justice system. It simply covers other expenses for, again, many of the, and I'll go into more detail on exactly what is included in that particular budget. The second category that we came up with was building and grounds maintenance and capital improvements. The second was insurance and pensions, and that category certainly includes more than just county employee health benefits and pensions, it also, again, like I said, includes the building insurance and vehicle insurance, all of those other pieces. Public services, we also lumped into one area, what we did was, we took all of those things that county government is responsible for from a service delivery perspective, excluding the criminal justice system, which was such a huge component of the general fund, that we felt the need to separate that out. Finance and records, we took the auditor, the treasurer, the recorder's office, the tax map office, the record center, the board of revision, and we aggregated those offices into one spending category. We then took community development, there was a line item for community development for the port authority and for the regional airport. We aggregated those into one expense category, really representing the economic development emphasis for the county. And then we took the commissioners' offices, the board of commissioners, the budget office, personnel office, and then some of the discretionary funding, and we put that into one category. So what I'd like to do is go through each and every one of these, because it's really the way to tease out, again, what can we attribute increased spending to in recent years. If you look at the criminal justice system, and again, this includes the sheriff's office, the jail, domestic relations, clerk of courts, muni courts, probate court, law library, prosecutor's office, so everything that comprises the criminal justice system, again, I want to be very, very clear, does not include the building and grounds and capital improvement expenses for the buildings associated with the criminal justice system, that's in the separate category, and also doesn't include insurance and pensions for justice system employees. But if you look at these expenses, in 2000, the criminal justice expenses cost the county about $18 million. By 2006, those expenses were up close to, well, they were at $29 million. What that means is that the net spending, the net spending by the county over those six years for the criminal justice system was in fact an additional $11 million. Now, when you look at this in relation to those other expense categories that I just described, that is by far the number-one source of increased expenses to county government in recent years. In fact, this category of expense comprised about 48% of the entire general fund. Now, if you took and added back in the building and grounds maintenance insurance on vehicles and buildings and employee insurance, what you're likely to see is that that would actually comprise probably anywhere from 60% to 70% of general fund expenses wrapped up right within the criminal justice system. Some of the things we looked at again, to try and understand why, why has spending increased so dramatically for the justice system in Lorain County? And really, what we found was a whole slew of state legislation out there that has impacted the justice system over the years. Certainly not enough time to go through all of them, but let me just give you a flavor for some of that legislation. If you go all the way back to 1995, the truth in sentencing legislation, really in a nutshell, without getting into the details of that legislation, increased incarceration time for a variety of offenders. When you do that, again, the impact on county governments certainly goes up, as does the manpower for incarceration, the facilities to house these offenders, et cetera. Another example, and many can probably relate with this because we see the information coming out every day, the SORN legislation, the sex offender and registration and notification, you know, per state law, sex offenders must register with the county and the public must be notified. When that kind of legislation comes into effect, again, it increases the manpower required to do all of that kind of work. Certainly, one of the, I'm sure, dramatic costs to county government and to the prosecutor's office is the indigent offender work, you know, the representation for low-income residents and offenders is something that, it's not a choice, it's something that county government, that the prosecutor's office has to handle, again, requiring the manpower and other expenses to do so. There's new laws in terms of juvenile offenders, and their incarceration time war, you know, again, impacting counties. The other thing that I think is worth mentioning with the entire justice system is county governments are really responsible for the justice on behalf of the townships as well. If somebody is arrested per state law in one of the townships, they have to be held, and usually, that's going to fall back on the county government, because townships, of course, don't have the facilities, the capacity to handle those types of things, so that those types of expenses by law fall back on county government. So again, there's a whole array of those types of legislation, I'm sure our prosecutor can speak, you know, in depth in relation to some of those, but they do impact expenses for Lorain County Government, again, something for which there's no choice, it's mandated by state law, it's not discretionary funding. And again, we see that playing out in the additional net spending of $11 million over the past, over these six years that we study. Building maintenance and capital improvements, again, one of the categories. This building maintenance, again, this includes all of the buildings that are currently owned and operated by county government.
Shara, before we go on to that, I think it's important to note that it's in your, on page seven, it says, "By 2010, the criminal justice system could cost Lorain County more than $37,900,000 in general funds, and by the year 2020, the cost could be as high as $57 million, which is the equivalent of current revenue streams," and again, does not include the cost to maintain buildings and capital improvements, et cetera.
There's no doubt.
I mean, that's a scary thought, that that would eat up our entire budget.
Your entire budget, absolutely. What we did, and this is something I'll talk about when we kind of compare revenues and expenses, but for each one of these expense categories, we did just a basic linear progression where we looked at, at the rate of these expenses that you've seen in recent years, where are you going to be in 2010, and where are you going to be in 2020? Again, assuming that the state continues with some of its unfunded mandates back on the county. Just, it was just a direct linear, you know, progression. And that's correct, by 2020, if these expenses continue to increase at the same rate that they have in recent years, yeah, at your current revenue stream, at your current revenue levels, it would consume almost all of your revenues.
Shara, this doesn't take into account anything new jail capital improvements or brand-new jails, could bring $60 or $70 million either down the road.
Correct.
Is this a full absorption number? You and I spoke on that, did you go back and extrapolate the full absorption cost that we discussed?
No.
So can we speak to that a bit at this point?
Sure, you know, the figures that Commissioner Kokowski is reading from assumes, again, it doesn't include the building grounds maintenance, it doesn't include...
Is this a full absorption number? You and I spoke on that. Did you go back and extrapolate the full absorption cost that we discussed?
No.
So can we speak to that a bit at this point?
Sure. You know, the figures that Commissioner Kokowski is reading from assumes, again, it doesn't include the building grounds maintenance, it doesn't include capital improvements, it does not include healthcare for, you know, sheriff deputies and all others in this system. So when we say that it could consume, I think, I can't remember what the figure was exactly.
$57 million.
$57 million. That doesn't even include full absorption costs for the criminal justice system.
And the full absorption cost could easily be $6 or $7 or $8 million more.
Absolutely.
Because we're not absorbing any of the, as you say, you call the building grounds, but debt service on the justice center is not in that, which is directly related to the criminal justice system. Healthcare, those individual departments probably are at least half the total number in the general fund. I think it would be greater than half, and we're paying several millions of dollars just in healthcare costs, so conservatively, $2 or $3 million right there, just for healthcare and current dollars. So I would say that a good number would be about $8 million at least on top of this, probably closer to 10, on a full absorption basis. And there wasn't time to do a full absorption analysis of what that would cost, so, you know, for our friends in the media here, when they're reporting out, we need to recognize the fact that these numbers are only based upon current accounts that are provided on a non-global basis to these departments rather than a full absorption cost, and it needs to be reflected that way properly.
There is absolutely no doubt. Again, when we say that in 2006, the criminal justice system comprised 48% of the entire general fund, that figure, we can reasonably say, is more likely to be 60 to 70%. So that's correct. You know, you add another $8 million onto those projected figures, and basically, the justice system alone would put you over in future years, your current revenue streams, alone, alone. So that is certainly the significance, you know, of that analysis. Buildings, maintenance, and capital improvements. Again, this includes, you know, all of the properties that are owned, operated by county government, the courthouse, the clerk of courts, the justice center, this building, the administration building, the parking garage, the train station, the county health department, the dog pound, the engineer's office, all of the highway department sheds, garages, the agricultural center, the airport, the transit office, the board of elections. Again, when you take into consideration all of those properties and the building maintenance and operations required for that, let alone the capital improvements, that was this particular category. You know, and this goes down to all levels. I mean, you know, I know that there's, you know, levels of detail like elevator maintenance within, you know, those types of dwellings that cost counties money in terms of keeping up those maintenance contracts. In addition, you know, one of the things that we know for governments at all levels are starting to deal with aging infrastructure. So you've got aging dwellings that are in need of significant repair and renovation. Again, that falls back on the county for these particular properties in actual expenditures and costs. If you look at the building and ground maintenance and capital improvement costs, they were approximately $8 million in 2000, up to $9,400,000 in 2006. Now, one of the things that you have to take into consideration, I think, with this particular expense category is the capital improvement costs. You know, you're likely to see this particular set of expenditures go up and down. I mean, obviously, you know, the way that most governments operate is, you know, if there is money to cover, you know, necessary renovations, new roofs, new, you know, new flooring, let alone new facilities, as the county has supported in recent years. Some years, you're going to see expenditures in those areas, some years, you're not, just depending on where revenues and expenditures are at. So this particular budget category can go up and down quite significantly. As a matter of fact, if you look at the shift between 2005 and 2006, you know, $6,700,000 to $9,400,000, Mr. Cortez, I would assume that that was, in fact, in relation to some of the justice center.
Well, actually, it wasn't the justice center. It was a, when this building was, when the building was no longer used by the criminal justice system on the fifth floor and parts of the fourth floor, renovations were planned for this building and money had been saved for a number of years to complete projects on the fifth floor, fourth floor, and then some smaller projects because children's services paid for an extensive amount on the third floor. So during 2006 and in the early 2007, we saw renovation of most of the infrastructure in this building, and then we did an energy conservation upgrade on most of the building infrastructure. So it wasn't a haphazard approach to the capital. And I just want, and you didn't say that, but I just want to put it out there, this was something that we had planned for and that the board completed that project when they came into office, and it took us about two years to do that. So those capital outlays came mostly in 2005 and '06, mostly in '06, though, and you'll see a reduction in that in '07 because we've been holding up a bit on capital projects. I expect that number to drop down to a more fully into the trend line, somewhere in around $6.3 million, $6.2 million in that category there. But you rightfully pointed out that we have put off certain capital needs that are rapidly becoming beyond our ability to put off soon.
Sure. Well, and if you look at this expense category, again, look at it in relation to the criminal justice system. This expense category in 2006 comprised about 16% of the general fund. It was the second highest set of expenditures against the general fund. However, look at net spending in this area. Net spending across 2000, 2006 was only the fourth highest, and in fact, I believe that it was an additional $1,200,000, not even close to the net expenditures of $11 million that you saw with the justice system over this same time period.
Let me talk a little bit about what's included in this number. It's simply not brick and mortar.
Yes.
These numbers include your utilities, your cost of cleaning supplies, excuse me, everything from paper towels, toilet paper, to lawnmower blades. It's quite an extensive accounting system we have here for the building and grounds, and we capture a lot of cost in there. If we have rent on buildings, the rent comes out of there. I believe our liability insurance is also under our building and grounds heading. Would that be correctly?
That's under the.
Is it under the insurance?
And pensions.
Okay. And we've seen a huge jump, like everybody else has, in our energy cost over the last two years, and that's going to continue to escalate. So it's not just simply that we're going out and doing capital projects and replacing brick and mortar. A lot of this is ongoing, continuous operating cost, so we just can't say we're going to not do capital improvements, so we're not going to have $5 million worth of expenses.
Right, which was very evident. I mean, we looked at, for each and every one of those years, the proportion of those expenses that were, Mr. Cortez, just for the building maintenance, you know, like I said, even down to elevator, you know, contracts that the county must, you know, keep updated each year. And we looked at that for each and every year, and in some cases, it would come out to about 50/50, but it varied. It varied, but it's certainly, you know, this expense category is not just capital improvement on behalf of county government. And again, the point is that it was, in fact, the second highest category of expenses against the general fund in 2006, yet net spending over a period of time was not as high. Insurance and pensions, this was just brought up. Again, this includes building insurance, all of the vehicle insurance, I believe Lisa has included in the insurance and pension line item against the general fund, as well as then employee healthcare benefits and pension contributions. This was, in fact, the third highest category of spending against the general fund. You can see that in 2000, these costs were around $3 million. This was up to over $7 million in 2006. So what you see here is the net spending, even though it was only the third highest category, the net spending was the second highest. In other words, this, like the criminal justice system, is where you're seeing your most dramatic increases in costs. You know, again, $11 million there, almost $4 million in this particular expense category. You know, in terms of state legislation, I mean, you know, it's more easily, it's easier to understand, I think, the impact that state legislation can have on something like the justice system by some of those mandates coming down. But there's legislation that impacts this expense category as well. Certainly, you know, there's parameters out there, I believe, Mr. Cortez, in the revised code, in terms of maintenance of jail facilities and, you know, what all that might entail. In addition, there's been legislation in recent years that has mandated increases in public employee compensation. You know, more recently, there was a cost of living increase that was the state mandated for safety services professionals, for retired safety service professionals and their beneficiaries. Again, those types of things are going to impact spending within this category back to county government.
I like that line, "In addition, the state has mandated increases."
Yes, yes, absolutely. I mean, again, you know, those mandated increases, it's not something that the board of commissioners had the option or a choice to make in how far they wanted to go in relation to what the state was saying. This, again, is an instance where the state has said, this is what counties must do. And like Mr. Cortez was saying, you know, when you look at insurance premiums, you know, like any business, it's not, certainly not just, I think, county government, like any business, everybody's seeing increased costs in healthcare benefits and insurance premiums of all sorts.
Let me back up on this number for a second, and two things. One, I should have pointed out earlier, when Commissioner Kokowski discussed the $2 million we would have had accumulative from local government that was frozen, we should also point out that we would have had five additional million dollars over those five-year period if they had provided us with their partnership on the attorney, indigent defense attorneys. We jokingly talked about sending them a bill, I think, for $5.2 million that they promised us and never provided for us. So I'm not a good person with math, but $2 million, $5 million, it comes up to about $7 million worth of resources that were promised to this community that never materialized over a five-year period. And I think that's an important consideration when we look at, you know, our spending patterns, that, you know, the state is taking quite a bit of money out of the county, and they haven't been as generous returning it in some respects, in some areas, especially in some partnerships that they agreed to do so. And as far as healthcare insurance goes, I'm a little concerned about the trend line here because I have to look at that, but it's not a significant amount of money. But we actually, through structural changes in the healthcare plan that the board worked with me on, we actually saw a decrease in our premium for 2006, which saved us a net $600,000 for 2007. So that trend line will dip a little bit for 2007, and while we were successful at renegotiating our contracts after we made the structural changes, I'm not sure that we're going to see that $600,000 in savings for 2008, so we enjoyed the benefit of not having to put over half a million dollars in those accounts, which we probably will not see again for 2008 when we start doing the appropriations. Right now, healthcare is trending at about 11 to 12%, but prescription drug coverage is still trending at about 17 to 18%. And we may even see prescription drug eclipse our medical costs for the first time in 2008. We're almost at that tipping point where prescription drug is going to cost more than major medical. So those, I'm just trying to interject a few things. As we look at these numbers here, this is not going to evaporate anytime soon, and we're going to continue to wrestle with that. I also need to point out that the commissions have been very aggressive in cost sharing with the employees to lower the overall burden onto the general fund for those healthcare costs. So it's not as if we're not doing anything. Plan structural changes, aggressive contract negotiation, and cost sharing with the employees have all been there, so that it's not as if we've been sitting by idly and not looking at these issues.
Well, and in addition, you know, again, what you're seeing in this expense category is far more than just the employee health benefits. Again, you know, some of the cost savings that you have seen that Mr. Cortez just described in recent years could very well be overshadowed by building insurance, vehicle liability, you know, those types of things, because, again, it's a category. You know, I think the other important piece in relation to Mr. Cortez's comments is you have precedent in recent years with the state of Ohio not coming forward and, you know, putting provisions back in to reimburse counties for losses of revenues coming from the state of Ohio. And again, that's why I worry about that 2010 hold harmless provision with the collectible property and business taxes. Who knows what the state is going to do? Hopefully, they will, you know, put some kind of provision back in.
The state has collected almost twice as much in the cat tax as they anticipated. Uniquely, they've spent it all, and they didn't return any additional funds other than to make us whole in the personal property tax. It would have been nice if it generated additional revenue that on a partnership level, they have returned some at an additional level to the local community to support those local communities. So not only do we not have a guarantee, but they collected more than they ever envisioned, and they spend it all. And I, you know, once again, they have not returned the resources that they've taken out of the community to the community so that we could support our constituency here.
There's no doubt. And, you know, certainly, I mean, governments at all levels, including our state government and the state of Ohio, is struggling. They're all struggling financially. But the impact is, again, since county governments are subject to state legislative authority, you know, state government has some choices. County governments are more limited in their choices for, you know, spending patterns than is the state government. But certainly, governments at all levels struggling financially, and you're seeing the impact of that. I mean, that's what we're seeing. That's what this analysis shows, the impact of that back onto county government.
Well, but clearly, even if the state is struggling, it was just a few short years ago that they passed a tax increase that was supposed to be temporary for two years, and then when they very quietly only repealed half of that sales tax and left the other half on and continued to draw resources from the community without returning any additional benefit to those communities.
Because they can.
Because they can. Because they can, sure, I understand. But I think those things need to be pointed out.
Absolutely.
When people pay taxes, they think they're paying taxes to us. They don't really think about where those are going. So they did have that tax increase that the state imposed upon them, but we did not see $1 of that increase that they imposed upon the residents here.
Very important. Let's shift real quickly to public services, another expense category that we looked at. You know, typically, the average citizen is much more familiar, myself, you know, included, with many of the city services that are provided to people because it tends to impact them more directly. I mean, I'm going to be upset if my snow removal and things like that on city streets aren't taken care of, and I know where that come from. It's back to city government. But county governments as well have an array of public service responsibilities back to the community. What we did was we took, again, some of the line items for public assistance. The public transit is included in this category, workforce development, the elections, vital statistics, the coroner's office, you know, again, some of the big public services, excluding, again, the county justice system because we had separated that out into that other category. But again, veteran services is another good example. Disaster services is another example of some of the public services, again, that we aggregated into this expense category. You know, some of these services, this is important, within this particular expense category, some of these services are mandated.
Right.
Veteran services are mandated. Board of elections is mandated by state government. There are others within this expense category that, in fact, can be discretionary on behalf of the board of commissioners. I believe public transit is one of those discretionary, agricultural services, the ditch cleaning, the beekeeper, and some of those other things that the county is responsible for. And what's interesting is when we were going through some of the detail on these expenses, one of the things that we saw is, again, by no choice, you know, because they're mandated, you know, you see the expenses staying the same in terms of veteran services, disaster services, the board of elections. The board of elections, in fact, comprised about 29% of this entire expense category, again, something that's mandated by the state. What we did see on the discretionary side was, in recent years, public transit has been cut, in recent years, the agricultural services, the ditch cleaning, the beekeeper, some of those have been cut. And again, I would imagine it's the only choice that county government has had in to offset the increased expenditures in some of the other mandated areas. And if you look at this, you know, these expenditures have been fairly stable over time. It is, this expense category does comprise the fourth largest draw against the general fund, 11% of general fund expenses in 2006. Net spending was $1,600,000 over this time period. You know, this, too, is another area where state mandates can, in fact, expenditures in this area, just to give you two examples, and I'm sure there's many, many, many more. House Bill 262. House Bill 262 was the legislation that required an increase in per diem for poll workers. You already have the Board of Elections, which is 29%, 28%, 29% of all expenses within this category, and that state legislation that impacted those expenses even further. The other thing is veteran services. Again, you know, veteran services was something that was a part of the formation of county governments, you know, again, with an auditor, a treasurer, a recorder. Veteran services have been traditionally one of those services that the state has mandated counties to take care of. You know, again, if you're trying to project forward, look at all the service members that are currently in the Iraq War that will be coming home soon, those costs, I mean, I would expect that in future years, you're going to see some increases in payouts to veterans.
We already have this year, and if the board hasn't gotten through their correspondence, we have an additional request for veteran services, another $50,000 this year. In these costs under public service expense, I need to point out that there's probably close to $2 million for attorney-defense fees. That's in this category right here. Lisa, what do we anticipate spending, about 1.6, 1.7?
I think we're already about that.
And we're a little bit weak in that area for the rest of the year.
I think we have that underneath the category of Commissioner's Office.
I do, too.
Do you have it under the Commissioner's Office, it's not in here?
Is it professional service contracts?
Then what would be public assistance? Public assistance, our mandated share?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so our mandated share for job and family services for TANF and those programs, it's about 1.1, 1.2 million?
1.5, isn't it?
1.3 or something.
So, that's another area that people don't realize, that when they receive benefits from job and family services, that we have a mandated portion that we have to pay from the general fund. That was something the state adopted, and it wasn't recent, but there was a time when we didn't have to pay a mandated share. The state, because they were taking the tax dollars from the community, they returned it, and they also funded the federal dollars through the state to the local level. And then low and behold, they had some issues, and they turned around and decided we had to pay a mandated share for the resources that were applied locally, and that number fluctuates each year also. So, without being able to pay that mandated share, we don't get resources from the federal government or the state through the job and family services for food stamps and housing and daycare and the merit of services that are provided there. Just wanted to point that out, is it's another one of those things that we have no ability not to pay.
Absolutely. Well, you know, I think another subtle example within this expense category is the workforce development dollars. Now, granted, those are simply, you know, pass-through dollars through county governments, you know, as I understand that. However, I'm sure your budget office, your personnel office, you know, those that, again, have to put forth time and effort to accommodate that pass, excuse me, that pass-through of monies at the local level. So, again, that does indirectly affect time and effort and expenditures for county government.
It's very similar to the Children and Family First, that's operated by the commissioners. Right now, we're actually finally in the black, but over the last several years, that agency was often by any group that could have had it because there was a couple hundred thousand dollars' worth of need in those departments to bring back a couple million dollars' worth of resources for the community, and the commissioner stepped up to the plate and absorbed all that. And we still have a couple advances out there that we need to do amnesty on that Lisa and I talked about, because once you're out of a program yet with the state, you can't go back and collect those expenditures. So, if the money doesn't materialize, you've just eaten it. And I'm sure we're at at least $300,000 or $400,000 off the top of my head for operating those services for the community, and it's another area where we just haven't received enough administrative money to be able to run the agency properly. So, it's chicken and egg. You don't get $3 million for your community if you don't pay a couple hundred thousand dollars from the general fund. So, the multiplying effect usually is pretty worthwhile, but those services, on the ETS, you have a coroner, too, and I got to tell you, the coroner runs a pretty efficient operation, but there's no way we could do without a coroner.
No.
Certain things are mandated, you know, through the coroner's office that have to be done, and while he hasn't demanded a lot of money over the years or increases, we still have the need to provide for those services, and those coroner services would be very closely aligned with criminal justice, more so than public service, although they're paid through the public service. I'm just going to put my plug in for where I think a lot of that expense would be. Okay?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think what, in fact, you're going to see with public services, you know, again, when you start looking at the increases in costs to sustain the Board of Elections, you know, the increased costs, payouts to veteran services and others, I think you're going to continue to see the public assistance piece as well. I think you're going to continue to see increases in expenditures within this particular expense category that then the board will have to offset with those discretionary allocations that can be made, you know, again, in terms of public transit, the agricultural services, that type of thing.
Can I dialogue with you a second on a couple of those that are discretionary, but that have a significant bearing on the community, not only because, in the case of transit, if we didn't give them a half a million dollars, what would happen to transit? Well, the realization is we're bringing back $3 million in federal funds from the FTA. So, without a transit, we don't bring the resources that will be allocated to a different community, and then those $3 million won't be spent here.
Ready whenever you are, Shar. Sorry about the interruption.
No problem at all. Well, let's continue, again, going, you know, through some of the expense categories. There's just a few more, and then we'll wrap this up. I know this is taking quite a bit of time here. Let's shift to the finance and records expense category. Now, again, this is where we took the line items for the auditor's office, the treasurer's office, the recorder's office, the tax map office, the record center, and the Board of Revision, and we kind of aggregated these into one expense category. In 2000 expenses for this expense category, we're at about two, close to $3 million, but at $2,700,000. That was up to about $3.6 million in 2006. As an expense category in and of itself, this category comprised about 6% of the entire general fund. I mean, not near what the justice system, what building grounds and maintenance, capital improvements, or the insurance and pensions and public services account for, but this, in fact, was 6%. Spending in this category's been more stable, not, you know, not a huge, significant source of increased expenditures. Net spending was less than $1 million over this six-year time period, about $906,000. You know, this is another expense category where these have been, again, relatively stable, they're more of the traditional functions of county government that exist. But, you know, there is some types of legislation that can, in fact, impact this type of, these types of offices as well. A good example is when, you know, the state begins mandating use of electronic records. When that happens, then follows, you know, what follows along with that is usually increased expenses to install or upgrade security systems, you know, that type of thing. And usually, if that legislation comes down the pike, that's usually what goes along with that type of mandate, is, oh, by the way, because this is public records that we're dealing with, you have got to upgrade these types of systems. So, again, just an example of the types of, you know, impact that can happen from the state, although this expense category, as I said, has been relatively stable over time. It's not as significant of a source of increased expenditures for the county. And again, you know, one of those other things, that many of these things are mandated, that this is not, again, a category of discretionary spending. You know, there needs to be an auditor's office, there needs to be a treasurer's office, there needs to be a recorder's office, you know, not, again, discretionary spending by the Board of Commissioners. Let's shift real quickly to the commissioner's office. Again, what we did was we took the Board of Commissioners, county administrators' offices, the budget office, the personnel office, we included all of those together, and then this expense category, very, very important to understand, includes the professional service contracts. This is exactly what Mr. Cortez was talking about earlier that could have fallen in some of those other categories. Professional service contracts, and I'll give some examples of some recent expenditures in those areas, fall within the commissioner's budget or this expense category as we created it. This is also where we included some of the discretionary allocations that the Board of Commissioner has made, the board has made in recent years. Let me give you just a couple examples of some of the professional services contracts that, again, we saw in the books when we were looking at some of the budget figures. Clemens Nelson and Associates for labor relation contracts. As an example, Voyer, Sater, and Seymour MPs for legal matters. Again, that's where you see, this is another one of those areas where there are some expenses embedded in here that you could, in fact, put back against the criminal justice system. It's almost like there's expenses embedded in every one of these categories that could be put back against justice system expenses. Engineering services. You know, I would imagine that, in fact, this work, the independent financial evaluation, would be another example of contracted professional services under the commissioner's budget. Discretionary funds in recent years have been things like allocations made to the Office on Aging, to the Lorraine County Historical Society, to Glide, to Team Lorraine County, to the Chamber of Commerce, to the Fair Board, to the Lorraine County Community Alliance. But when you look at the expenses, again, in relation to all of the other expense categories that we created, the expenditures have ranged from, actually, they were in 2003, $3,600,000. When you looked at, we looked at these in 2006, the expenses were actually down. What's happening and what you see, what we saw across this analysis is, as the increased expenses are incurred by the county for mandated services and functions, it's squeezing out the discretionary allocations that the Board of Commissioners can make. In fact, this was the only, even when we included professional service contracts and some of the discretionary spending here, even when we included those two things, this was the only category of expenses that we saw a net negative in spending over the six-year time period.
What was the spike in 2001? What was the reason for that? Do you know?
You know, I don't know what, Mr. Cortez, you might know what that related to, but I have, I'm not sure.
The spike in 2001 probably came when we were working on the Justice Center. More than likely, we paid professional fees out of the professional services in that year. We had, we contributed about $20 million in cash to the Justice Center, and a lot of that would have been coming out for engineering and our construction management services. So, if you took that spike out, you would trend that line down. You can see that it's been pretty stable. I need to point out, in professional services, I may, we share a lot of contracts with other departments, Commissioner Kokoski, the, just, you know, I think, two weeks ago, we did that mental health one with the Domestic Relations Court, where the board generously agreed to pay for half of that, and the courts found the other half within their budget. That would be included in those professional services. The professional service account is pretty generic, and we do partner with a lot of our other general fund agencies on paying those costs.
Like the jail study that we, the two jail studies come out of that.
Exactly, Commissioner, and a big expense, because this has been dropping, and really, even though it increased for 2006, that number would have dipped, but we also have paid close to $200,000 in legal fees to Thompson Heinz for the local government litigation that's ongoing right now.
Yes.
And so, that's a litigation that we have no ability to control, so there's $200,000 coming out of professional services for Thompson Heinz. So, a lot of those things, if we were able to not have to pay for them, we could, that line would actually be trending, would trend much further down. And some of the legal fees, we do, we do, you can attribute them to a little bit of economic development, like when we did the TIF, various TIFs and JEDs and things like that, we used the experts from Voyers to do that, and that goes into those professional service accounts, too, and studies that you partner with in the community are also paid out of there. So, a lot of those things are very, very important, and they get lumped into a big category under professional services.
Very big, very big. And we saw in the line items, all of the contracts that...
Right, if there's an arbitration, say, occasionally at the jail, when they do an arbitration, we have to split fees, it comes out of that professional services account, and we provide all of the labor relations activity for the county, every department in the county, and it comes out of that professional services. So, it may say commissioner's office, but really, it's a global general fund. The bulk of it is for everybody.
Yeah. Well, you know, and again, one of the things that we see from the perspective of PSI is, you know, governments, the state government is there, county government is here, and, you know, one of the things that we would like to think is that county government would have the option to tailor some of its funds to the needs of its particular community. I mean, every community does have, there's a lot of similarities, there's absolutely no doubt, but every community does have its own uniqueness. And what we're seeing in this analysis is that your ability to tailor funds, you know, because of the squeezing out of the discretionary funds is getting less and less. I mean, you can definitely see that. It's got to come from somewhere to support the mandated expenses, the additional $11 million for the justice system, the additional $4 million for insurance and pensions, which are what they are. So, you know, again, that's what we see is the discretionary spending, because this is really where it's represented, even though there's some of that in the public services budget, this is where it's really representative, and again, you see a net negative in spending over time. The last category, and I'll be honest with you, we went back and forth, I think I personally did this 10 different ways. We took the last expense category, and we took the Community Development Department, the line item for the Port Authority, and the line item for the Regional Airport. And again, we put this into one expense category. We said, you know, logically, that does represent some of the economic development functions for county government. However, it's not that clean, just like the criminal justice system, because I just mentioned that the Board of Commissioners, some of the allocations that have been made in recent years are to Glide, are to Team Lorraine County, are to the Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce, you know, so those could have been taken out and put over here, but we left them as separate categories. So, the point is, this particular expense category includes only the Community Development Department, the line item for the Port Authority, and the line item for the Regional Airport. And I think, based on the analysis that we did, Lisa and David would be better to comment on this, but I think the line item for the airport and the Port Authority was taken in and out, put in different places over the years, it looked like to me, within the general fund, so...
The Port Authority probably represented only about $25,000 from the general fund.
It was low, it's low.
It's pretty low, because we're generating revenue there. The one thing under the Community Development Department, though, we also have the, I mean, explaining community development, it's not just economic development, but it's, bless you, Commissioner, it's also the Planning Department, which is mandated functions of county government, and we have people assigned specifically to that, and then we have the zoning, not the zoning, the housing, building, Building Department underneath Community Development, which is a cost recovery unit, so that money comes back to the general fund, so it's not just economic development.
Absolutely, no doubt. As a matter of fact, you know, when we looked at this expense category, in 2006, Community Development Department in and of itself did comprise 85% of these funds. So, yes, the funds, you know, contributed to the airport and the Port Authority were much, much, much less. And yes, most definitely, an awful lot of infrastructure, even related planning, that is actually done out of the Community Development Department in addition to economic development. We, you know, when we looked at this, I can honestly say, even though the Community Development Department comprised about 85% of these funds, it was also the department where I think for three of the six years we looked at had experienced cuts over time, and it was very, very, very evident. So, what you see is, really, this is the seventh source of expenditures against the general fund. If you took the commissioner's category that I just described and this category and put them together, which we did do, that was what I kept playing back and forth with, those combined would be 7% of the general fund. And again, you know, a small component of that in relation to some of the other expenses. As a matter of fact, net spending for this particular expense category was the second lowest, it was only an additional $66,000 over a six-year period. And again, that's, you know, taking into account the cuts, and, you know, some of this fluctuated a little bit. But again, the point is here that these, in fact, the commissioner's budget, the community development, these are the funds that are being squeezed out in relation to the increase in expenditures in some of those other areas. And again, that was the objective of this report, was to look at, what can we attribute increased county expenditures to? It's not community development, it's not the commissioner's budget, it is, in fact, the justice system, building grounds, maintenance, capital improvements, and insurance and pensions. Those are your significant, significant sources of increased expenses. Here's just a chart that shows you, I think, exactly what I was just... Here's just a chart that, that shows you, I think, exactly what I was just describing. You know, you can see how much of, you know, if you take the, the criminal justice system, which is the light blue on the bottom, the buildings and capital improvements, and the insurance and pensions, and look at that, look at it over time, look at how much of the general fund those categories alone comprise, and then add the public services, many of which, again, are mandated services, the Board of Elections, veteran services, et cetera. You see, you see that overall picture where discretionary spending is becoming less and less. When we actually did the expense revenue comparison, this graph actually just shows the rate of change. Remember how I said the average rate of change for revenues was only 2.9% over time, yet expenditures overall, the general fund, was growing at a rate of, like, 6.4 or so percent over time? You know, that, that lets you see, distinguish the differences, you know, between those. And again, you know, I know that the public may say, well, why would the Board of Commissioners be spending at this level when their revenues are only at this level? Again, what the analysis shows is that many of that, much of that, most of the increased expenditures are attributable to mandated services imposed on county government, not discretionary funds. Mr. Cortez, did you have a comment?
Just on the chart, sometimes when we don't do a full absorption look, a lot of times, we're spending money, but we're getting reimbursed on the revenue side of the house, so it's really a wash on the expense, so the gap between the revenue and the expenses, this is nice to look at, but it's not actually that large. One of the areas would be workforce development, as you mentioned earlier-
Pass through.
-half a million goes out, but a half a million comes back in on the revenue side. So we, we didn't do this as a cost recovery look with relation to the chart, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. We didn't get into, you know, all of those nuances in terms of, you know, the cost recovery for certain components of expenditures, but, you know, the overall summary is the same, that expenditures are increasing at rates higher than your revenue streams coming in, and again, most of that is due to mandates for you to be making those expenditures per state law and the General Assembly. I think here's, here's the most important piece of this, okay? We took, we took a look at, like I said, you can go back through the report, and you can look at, if we project the criminal justice expenses, if we project public services, if we project expenses related to insurance and pensions, or building grounds and maintenance, we have what those figures look like for each and every one of those categories. When we, when we added all that up, what we came up with is, if you take into consideration those expenditure projections to 2008, 2010, and 2020, and you, you assume two things, we assumed revenue levels of 2006, okay, which probably isn't going to be too far off, because again, there's no real opportunity for increased revenues in the short term that, that we see here. But we assumed 2006 revenue level, we looked at what is going to be the potential shortfall for the general fund on Lorraine County Government, and what we came up with, oh, and the other thing is, this does not assume any financial carryover, any reserve for county government, that was not factored into this. So if you assume that, the potential shortfall for county government that we came up with to 2008 could be, could be as high as $8 million. I know that the Board of Commissioners, I believe I had seen some figures of $5 million, and again, that may be taking into consideration some of the financial carryover and some other things here, but when we did the straight linear projection, your shortfall could be as high as $8 million. What's more alarming is, if you go to 2010, if these justice system costs and insurance and pension and building maintenance costs continue to increase at the rate that they have over the past six or so years, you know, you're going to be, oh, you know what, I don't know if that's the actual shortfall, no, that's not the shortfall.
23 million, it's probably about 23 million.
It is, it is, it's in the, and I don't have a copy of the report with me, but it's in the actual report, there's, yeah, I think the shortfall was 23, 25 million for 2010, but then by the year 2020, it was up to like 50-some million dollars in, in budget shortfall. So, I mean, what this means, does the county need to be very, very cognizant of additional revenue streams to offset increased expenditures into the future? Absolutely. I think, you know, what also is important, you know, again, especially given the uncertainty around existing revenue streams, I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't take into consideration any cuts in revenue coming into the county, and, you know, with that uncertainty around local government funds and, and real estate taxes. But the other thing is, you know, I think that financial carryover, when you look at, you know, these types of expenditure patterns, is certainly something that's highly recommended for future financial stability of the county. I mean, you know, when we looked at, again, not taking into consideration some of the interplay with pass-through monies and, like Mr. Cortez was describing, but when we looked at just the total amount of revenues in 2006, and the total amount of expenses, you would have already been in a deficit situation without the financial carryover and, and some other sources at your disposal. And again, I think it's going to be necessary to offset the unpredictable nature of insurance and, and unfunded mandates coming down through the state. So that is the overall summary of the analysis that, that we had performed. I hope it really helps, again, shed some light on what you can attribute increased expenditures to in Lorraine County. I mean, that really, to me, I think, was the overall goal of, of this analysis in its entirety. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Chara.
Thank you, Chara. Took you an hour and a half to report, so it must have taken you a little while longer to compile.
Just a little.
Yes, David, you look like you have a question?
Well, I wondered if we could have public comment now?
Sure, come on up.
Do you need to switch this over, Jim?
Oh, sorry.
Wake up.
Morning, Commissioners, David Ashenhurst, Oberlin.
Hold on, David, hold on, or you're not going to be seen. There you go.
Thank you, Commissioners. David Ashenhurst, Oberlin. I've been here in the county 12 years. Before that, I was a plan giving officer for Rotary International. That was before PowerPoint, before the internet, before software that calculated the present value of a remainder interest in a charitable gift annuity. I used to do my calculations from the IRS actuarial manuals to nine decimal places. Then I'd go out and I'd try and talk to somebody about making a charitable gift, and I always had a notebook that had this cartoon on the back of it, with a little old lady sitting there, and a guy who-
Is it Betty?
No, 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 this is actually, like, friends of mine. No, no. Look, the illustration was that the guy who was me had all these charts and graphs and was talking like this, and the lady who he was talking to and trying to make this gift illustration to is the one whose caption is featured there, and she says, "Would you like another cup of tea?" And that presentation was excellent.
It was.
For all of that information, I am still concerned that we live in a soundbite world. We may have the lights go off and, and this not coming, I sort of feel like Neil Lynch up here today, too. I, I want more than three minutes, but I do hope, A, that this presentation is made available online, that the presentation is made available as a breakout for broadcast. I am concerned that the Commissioners cannot campaign. I, I don't quite understand this. I, I know that, I know that our school superintendent, in talking about levies down in Oberlin, is able to at least present the financial status of the school district in a, sort of a PowerPoint thing, and things sliding up and down. So I hope that in the next two weeks, this information can be made available in, in a bite-sized format that, that doesn't take an hour and a half, and I'm conscious that people have three minutes, they'll have three minutes or five minutes at Candidates Night in Oberlin to explain this issue. It also reminds me of an old advertising campaign in New York, which I believe Mr. Cortez will even remember. When the New York Daily News was running an ad campaign that said, "A picture is worth 1,000 words," they had Buddy Hackett running an advertisement for the New York Times that says, "Buddy Hackett says one picture is worth one picture," and, and allowed the words to carry the story, not, not always in terms of a picture. So I looked at one of the editorials, which I think is totally misguided in opposition to the sales tax increase, and realized that it takes three minutes to say that editorial out loud. I hope, in the next two weeks, the Commissioners, or if not the Commissioners, then citizens who understand the need for this, can work the, the argument in support of this, seems to me, totally necessary quarter cent sales tax increase, explainable in three minutes of words, not in an hour and a half of presentation, not in wonderful charts and things, but we are going to have to make this presentable in three minutes, which is about 600 words or something like that. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
I agree, it's almost too late, the Journal, I wish the Journal-
It's not too late.
Well, I don't think the Journal is going to go back and say, "I was wrong, and maybe we should endorse this tax," but I wish they would have all this information in front of them before they made that decision to, to go out against it.
We have some letters to the editor. Can't do as long as the editorial, but can be a lot smarter.
And reporter.
The reporter already left, too. She didn't even finish watching the presentation.
He had to go to Lake County for a video presentation.
Shirley R. Johnson, Oberlin. I don't think I fit the stereotype of the little old lady, I don't think we have, who brought her cups of tea, I don't think we have that stereotype amongst women nowadays. I echo, however, what he says, that I think it would be very important for you to do something about, in the time remaining, to get this message out to the public.
Thank you, Shirley.
Thank you, Shirley. Ron, did you want, did you want to come on?
Just a comment, and deja vu, '84, we can't pay any tax increase, we had the sales tax, we tried to put my work to set up, and the Journal endorsed it, and we got beat to the law, so.
Anyone else wishing to make public comment before Chara leaves us? Thank you very much, Chara.
Thanks again, Chara.
You opened our eyes to a lot of issues. I think the biggest thing we need to look at, if the sales tax doesn't pass, then there's not a whole lot of money left over for discretionary spending at all, so we're really going to have to tighten our belts. I mean, there's, there's no other way for us to survive unless we quit buying, quit spending, quit doing it, we'll have to quit doing everything.
Commissioners, a very wise former county commissioner once told me, "We can fix this problem. We lay off all the safety services, we do not arrest anybody, nobody goes to our jails, we don't have to feed them, the clerk has no work to do, the judges clear the docket out, and we don't have a shortfall anymore." So if the citizens like the criminals running on the street, it's fine.
Did that county commissioner do that when he was in office?
I think the county commissioner, ex-county commissioner, sitting in the audience right there, said that.
Did, did he?
I wasn't going to credit it to him.
Scan the audience, Hal.
I wasn't going to credit it to him.
But I want to know if he did that when he was in office.
Pardon me?
Did you do that when you were in office?
My recollection is we put a sales tax on.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Clerk, further media?
Okay. Resolutions, number one, Job and Family Services bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
No investments appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Travel expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorized various personnel actions, as in the game of summary for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez? We have one personnel action in Golden Acres, it should be a very brief executive session, it's a new hire, so, actually, we have an executive session at the conclusion of regular boy business today, and it's allowable under the sunshine law. Thank you.
Under Job and Family, approved interim agreement with Payless Shoe Source, Topeka, Kansas, for the purchase of school dress athletic shoes for OWF children, using TANF funds in the amount not to exceed $425,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Approved interim agreement with Speedway Prepaid Gas LLC, Eon, for purchase of prepaid fuel cards and using TANF funds in the amount not to exceed $720,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Clerk of Courts, Ron Nabokowski, Clerk of Courts, request an additional appropriation of $112,800.
Mr. Nabokowski?
Well, I've been here before, talking about the same subject before, part of that big, you know, justice item, I guess.
Hold on one second. Right here it is. He's coming up, he's coming up.
Last year, we added another judge, which took care of part of the backlog criminal justice cases for the judges, it moved, actually, down to my office, so we're now three weeks behind. If I don't get more money, I'll shut down on November 9th, so by the end of the year, they'll be quite a bit behind, so I really do need the money to keep justice moving in Lorraine County.
Ron, what kind of cuts have you implemented this year? I mean, have we had any cuts, or are we running over budget? I mean, where are we?
We've been cutting, you know, we're, we're spending, we made most of the cuts last year, and then it wasn't enough, it's not, I still need to hire two more people. We have plans to try to figure out how to do that without the general fund, hopefully that'll work out in the future. But we simply can't keep up, and I cannot, in good conscience, I'm mandated to, to do certain things, and can't get any further behind, I mean, three weeks behind in service is a very, very serious thing. Mr. Unis could probably address some of that. We simply can't get, get much longer.
Commissioners, comments?
This is one of those situations where we're mandated to do these things, I don't think we have a choice.
I would say my office really could have been categorized in the finance and recording, because basically, that's part of the justice system that we do, and we made cuts, too, we would have been, we would have added to the amount, decreased the amount that they increased, because we're spending less on, on salary, which is 90% of our ballot, than we were two years ago. So we, there's had people we've not replaced. Can't cut any.
Mr. Blair?
I didn't bring my cheat sheet with me today, so, what did, what did we cut you? Do you remember? We gave you half back of whatever you asked for, what did we give you?
Gave me 120-some thousand.
So you were $240,000 short, then? Well, this is, if this is any consolation, this is less than half.
Because we had a cut, I'll remind you that we had the cut, you cut us last year, we needed 70, 80,000 to finish the year, you gave it to us, you took that back, so that we didn't have a 5% cut, we had about an 8 or 9% cut.
We took the 78,000 off the beginning of the year, which is what we said we were going to do.
So you started in the hole in the first place? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll, so moved.
Do you have any further comments?
No, great.
One second.
Betty seconded.
Oh, I thought I moved, okay.
Oh, I thought you-
Oh, okay. So moved, second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Under the Engineer, approved interim agreement with ODOT for upgrading the intersection of State Route 57 and State Route 254 in Sheffield Township, and the county's responsibility for cost of adjustment of county-owned boughs and manholes is an estimate cost of $2,500.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
MRDD, approved change order GC011 to Sites Builder, Inc., for MRDD Service and Support Administration Building Projects. Total credit amount is $3,364.50, due to not needing to pulverize entire length of existing driveway, coating over only existing surfaces, and winding of bus circle will remain.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye. Hope someone missed Blair.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye. It's been a long meeting.
Under the Prosecutor, Dennis Will, Lorraine County Prosecutor, request an additional appropriation of 78,000 for salaries and PERS.
Mr. Corey?
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Corey.[1797.57]
Mr. Will is in Columbus at the Prosecuting Attorneys Association Legislative Meeting to discuss all of the pending legislation. It's currently being discussed to change the laws in the state of Ohio that's otherwise going to probably require that you eventually double what you're considering doing regarding the county jail.
Thank you, Mr. Corey.
You're welcome.
Get to start feeding them steak and lobster, or what?
Yeah.
I'll try to limit my comments to about a half hour.
Is that okay?
Go ahead. The floor is yours.
On October 2nd, I sent you a letter. We're here requesting essentially the other half of the cut. As I indicated in my October 2nd letter to you, the amount of $156,000 was needed to get us through the year. You gave us 78,000 of it. In anticipation of this, we did some things this year that we hoped would help in anticipation of a cut. Number one, we entered into a contract for our Title IVD services that would otherwise save the general fund $63,000 this year. We entered into a contract for Title IVE state subsidies that would increase revenue that the county would receive by $58,878. We did not spend approximately $53,000 of our budget from last year. In a criminal case that has been concluded regarding the architect that worked on the Justice Center, we recovered $20,000 of our investigative costs, along with an additional $400,000 that we've turned over to the general fund. We attempted to do that anticipating that we were going to get cut. So, if you total all that up, it's about $600,000, and hopefully, that has helped. In our office itself, there have been a couple positions that we delayed hiring people after retirements. And in addition, regarding our prosecutor staff, we have essentially been down a prosecutor all year as a result of a very unfortunate situation that occurred regarding this prosecutor, where he fell down and broke his neck, and has essentially been out for about 90% of the year. We've also had two prosecutors that have had to serve time in the National Guard, one of whom had spent a year in Iraq and returned in January. So, from the standpoint of the employee level, more status quo, a little down. And what I'm here today asking you for is additional $78,000. I might mention this, too. One thing we're seeing in our office is a substantial spike in homicides involving juveniles. That in of itself creates an additional level of work that we don't see, that is not necessary when it involves adults. The other thing we're seeing that is taking up quite a bit of our time is a substantial increased level in small children deaths. Not only are they tragic in and of themselves, but it necessitates quite a bit of time for our staff to spend with Babies Rainbow Children's Hospital and the expert medical staff there, who provides us with analysis in detail, estimating when injuries have occurred, time of death. Those things are extremely important, because who had access to the child during those periods of time is important. And the types of injuries that would seem to indicate certain types of conduct for our office to evaluate how charges should be brought and against whom, along with meeting with, in a couple, three occasions, with the Koga County coroner since the deaths occurred actually in Babies Rainbow Children's Hospital. So, all of those things create certain levels of work that, and time and energy, and two and three people not being able to process the normal daily kinds of work that we see in our office, including yours truly, with the hospital personnel and with coroners, offices in Koga County, for the purpose of evaluating those kinds of cases. None of us anticipate it's going to get any better. And it's a job we have to do. The thing we'll pledge to the commissioners, we'll do everything we can to keep the costs at a, at a, at an equal level. I noticed, by the way, one thing that was interesting in the presentation, if you look at the justice system expenditures, from 2000 to 2003, they, it looks like they increased about 41%. And then from 2003, or 2004 to 2006, about 13%. And you're going to see those ebbs and flows. I can also tell you that based upon what the legislature has been doing in Columbus over the last four to five to six months, I would anticipate we're going to see more and more and more kinds of conduct that are defined and criminalized to the extent that they're going to be categorized at a substantially higher felony rate that ultimately will lead to more incarcerations than we have experienced as recently as the last couple of years. As people demand more and more and more that our justice system respond in such a way that people are removed from society, the more and more it requires not only additional personnel, but the sheriff's department, which substantially impacts the clerk of court's office, and it will substantially impact our office as we go through those processes. Because people who are charged with crimes that either require incarceration, this is a general rule, or what the presumption is they should be incarcerated, try their cases. Right? If I got to go to jail, if I'm guilty, then I want a trial. As opposed to pleas, where people might ultimately end up in a probation setting. That is normally the result of increasing those penalties. Just the one that you may have read in the paper today, leveling off powder cocaine and crack cocaine. That's going to really lead to a substantial number of additional incarcerations. So, I just bring that to your attention, just to support the statement I made. It's not going to get any better from the standpoint of expenditures and requirements. It's only going to get worse, depending on your perspective. So, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. And I would say certainly, if you did the analysis, as Jim was talking about, the justice system is guaranteed 70% of your overall expenditures.
Mr. Corey, do we have any other additional funds coming this year from lawsuits that we have filed? I see only the 20,000. I thought we were recouping another amount of 25,000 from another lawsuit on the Justice Center?
Yeah, we had, that one may be as much as 50,000. Plus, we're working on another of the criminal cases involving the Justice Center, where we're hopeful we will recoup an additional amount of money.
Okay. All right. I'll move to approve the $78,000, because at least they're chasing us dollars down in returning the general fund.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, George.
Mr. Cortez, County Minister.
I have no additional comments or reports this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Anis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
Commissioners, I don't have anything in particular. There are a couple of pending litigation matters that if we go into litigation, sometimes the commissioners have questions, and I can update them, but I don't have any particular items for today.
Commissioners, report?
Oh, no report today.
Mr. Blair?
I just wanted to let you know that yesterday, I was a guest on Dan Molethorpe's Sound of Ideas, WCPN 90.3, Ideas Stream, together with Peter Lawson Jones from Cuyahoga County and Steve Hambley from Medina County. And we talked about how to play nice in the sandbox.
And how'd it go? Did you get sand kicked in your face again like we did last week?
Not at all. The traffic was terrible. I left home before 8:00, and it's less than 30 miles. I didn't get there until 10 after 9:00. I finally called and saw I was going to be late, because I wanted them to know. So, the program had already started, so when Dan introduced me, I told him, I apologized, and I said, "Now, if we had had commuter rail, I would have been there on time." So, anyway, I also told him about our alliance meeting tomorrow, the 26th, and put a plug in for that. It was a very nice discussion. They took caller, calls in, and also email comments. It was an interesting experience. I missed the visitors' bureau board meeting, and the chamber retreat, and the diversity, minority extravaganza that you're going to report on for that.
Yeah, I did all those. End of my report.
You're wonderful. So, that's it. Thank you.
I think the biggest news is last Thursday afternoon, the announcement of the 400 additional jobs from Teletext. And it was really neat doing the technology where we broadcast from here and out to community college. I think it went off real well. Lorraine County's entered the 21st century, when it works, anyway, not like today. Also, did the bond reading review. Hope to have some report on that next week, is how we turned out. Did fill out the chamber retreat for Commissioner Blair. It was a very nice event. People networking and talking about what the vision is for the chamber down the road. And I did get an opportunity to speak at Diversity Expo, which was hosted by Lorraine County Urban League and Minority Business Development Center. So, had a very nice turnout, a lot of vendors and a lot of participants. End of my report.
I don't have any big work respondents.
Move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to speak before the board? I think so.
Just briefly, Shirley R. Johnson Oberlin, I just want to point out that when Mr. Corey and the other folks that have spoken about the increased monies needed for the justice system and so on, that if, you and the public should be well aware of the fact, if we didn't have to spend the money for that kind of thing, we would need to be spending the money for other social services and have that kind of money for other social services in ways to help people who are having, developing the kinds of things that get them into the criminal justice system.
I agree, Shirley.
So, we can't save money anyplace on that area.
I agree, Shirley.
Either way.
I mean, that's a big issue. We're spending it, putting them in jail instead of doing something for them prior to getting in trouble. But we're mandated to put them in jail. We're not mandated to make them better people, it seems like.
Morning, Commissioners. David Ashenhurst Oberlin again, with just two very brief things. I was reminded also in reading some of what I had in front of me, that another one of those word things that has to be worked on is the difference between a surplus, as some people call, what the rest of us call, carryover or reserves. And it's just incorrect to say county government had a surplus, when what they mean is county government has accumulated a reserve over a period of time, which it needs to support lower bond interest costs and all sorts of other things. And you can't run with nothing in the bank. I mean, that's just obvious to everybody else, but I don't know why it isn't there. And the other thing is to just say, I'm very glad Commissioner Blair told us what she was doing on the radio, because Ideas Stream does take all those Sound of Ideas thing and has them available for podcasting. So, I can go hear what, I can't call in, I can't send an email, but they actually even let you get the last word in if, when you listen on the internet. So, I will be going to listen to that, and I'm glad she was there. And, boy, do I hope we someday have some things that we can podcast and download off the internet about county government. And what you are trying to explain to the public, that you seem to me to have to go through a very narrow pipeline to be able to do that.
As soon as we can improve our website, I hope to do those things. I've been bringing it up for almost three years now.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to make comments? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
No, no. You want to go into executive session?
Right. Yeah, motion to move an executive session is outlined.
I said second.
I know, you said second to the adjournment, so that takes precedence, I guess.
Well, you didn't have a second, though.
But she wanted to withdraw it.
Boy, is she getting technical on us. I'm not going to do this school anymore.
Withdraw your second.
I'm withdrawing it, because I didn't mean to second your motion. You want to try again?
It dies. Motion to move an executive session is outlined by the administrator.
I'll second that.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Pedestrian injuries represent the second largest number in motor-related deaths. In the current report by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, of the 812 traffic fatalities for children ages 5 to 9, almost one-third, that's 254, were pedestrian fatalities. These numbers were just very staggering to me in this office. Most of these were from pedestrian crossings. Children are educated in crossing streets where there are sidewalks and obviously stoplights, or where there are no sidewalks and there are stop signs. So, basically, it was based on the fact that they aren't getting proper education, or they hadn't, hadn't any education on how to cross streets with sidewalks or without sidewalks. So, that's what really got us motivated to look into this and do something about it.
County Engineers Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School Program has been initiated throughout Lorraine County. We're very excited about this. To help these children from grades K to 4, teaching them to walk the streets safely is very important to us. We've seen statistics that quite frankly shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorraine County, and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to 4 part of that. This program is to stop that, or help diminish those type of situations, and educate these children on walking and crossing the streets safely. And we're quite happy to announce that.
Most of our workshop was developed and made in-house. Simulated sidewalks, simulated streets. We have actual working stoplights. We have the pedestrian crossing signs that actually work. We have operational railroad crossings. We also have the regular road signs, like your pedestrian crossing, your stop sign, your railroad sign. So, we have all of these different things that the children can not only visualize, but then we actually interact the children in those situations, so they can not only see, but they can use these in their learning abilities on how to cross the streets with and without sidewalks. We've had so many good responses back from the children, and of course, it's just like anything else with children, when you ask for volunteers, when you're talking in a group of 60, and you can only have eight, it's amazing at the hands that go up, you know? Does anybody want to volunteer? Well, everybody wants to volunteer. We make them go over these skills that we're trying to teach them, not only the volunteers, but the group as a whole. So, basically, we have the whole class interacting. So, if they say, "Left, right, left, behind you, in front of you," once, they say it at least eight or 10 times before the workshop is over. So, we've had many teachers and many principals tell us, and we even had one child that came up to us and said, "You know what, Ms. Stansky? We were going to cross the street the other day, and we remembered, 'Look left, look right, look left.'" So, that was very rewarding. And so, I think the repetition, the interaction with the children and with the items in our workshop is very important to them and to us. or where there are no sidewalks and there are stop signs. So basically, it was based on the fact that they aren't getting proper education or they hadn't, hadn't any education on how to cross streets with sidewalks or without sidewalks. So that's what really got us motivated to look into this and do something about it.
County Engineers Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School Program has been initiated throughout Lorraine County. We're very excited about this, to help these children from grades K to 4. Teaching them to walk the streets safely is very important to us. We've seen statistics that quite frankly shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorraine County and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to 4 part of that. This program is to stop that or help diminish those type of situations and educate these children on walking and crossing the streets safely. And we're quite happy to announce that.
Most of our workshop was developed and made in-house. Simulated sidewalks, simulated streets, we have actual working stoplights, we have the pedestrian crossing signs that actually work, we have operational railroad crossings, we also have the regular road signs like your pedestrian crossing, your stop sign, your railroad sign. So we have all of these different things that the children can not only visualize, but then we actually interact the children in those situations so they can not only see, but they can use these in their learning abilities on how to cross the streets with and without sidewalks. We've had so many good responses back from the children, and of course, it's just like anything else with children, when you ask for volunteers, when you're talking in a group of 60 and you can only have eight, it's amazing at the hands that go up, you know, does anybody want to volunteer? Well, everybody wants to volunteer. We make them go over these skills that we're trying to teach them, not only the volunteers, but the group as a whole. So basically, we have the whole class interacting. So if they say left, right, left, behind you, in front of you, once, they say it at least eight or 10 times before the workshop is over. So we've had many teachers and many principals tell us, and we even had one child that came up to us and said, you know what, Ms. Spansky, we were going to cross the street the other day and we remembered, look left, look right, look left. So that was very rewarding. And so I think the repetition, the interaction with the children and with the items in our workshop is very important to them and to us. Before you even go into the safety part of it, they're in awe over the traffic light and then our railroad crossing signals actually work. So they're just like, oh, ooh. And we get up there and we tell them, and we even give them some trick questions, you know, we'll say, well, we can see that train all the way down the track. Do you think we can make it? Because you're fast and I'm fast and we can run. And of course, they're very enthusiastic and, no, we shouldn't do this. So we teach them that in some urban areas, you will not have the gates that come down to keep you actually from crossing, that you may just have two sets of tracks. And just because one goes by and the signal stops, doesn't mean that another one can't come from the other direction. So we tell them it's very, very imperative that they stay back from the tracks and they wait till those signals stop and to look both ways. And even once those signals stop, to look both ways, and they should never run across the railroad tracks, they should walk and continue to look both ways because it's not safe. And they could fall, they could injure themselves if they're alone, if they're not with someone, it could be very dangerous because not only could they injure themselves, they may not have help if there is a train coming because they are so small. And as you know, some of those tracks are very large and you're talking in kindergarten through fourth grade, some of those children are very small children. The main thing is, is that we tell them that only you know when it's safe. You have to make that ultimate decision. So make sure that you know that it's safe before you cross those railroad tracks or a street. One of the other things that we cover in the safety workshop, and it's also repeated in our video, children don't have that perception of the miles per hour. It's very dangerous. And the same thing with trains, we tell them that train could take, you know, forever, it's way down there, but we don't know the actual miles per hour. We decided to use two different videos. The first one is geared for kindergarten and first grade, and that is Auto the Auto, put out by AAA.
Hi, kids. A lot of times, you have to walk to get to places. And when you're walking, you have to be especially careful of cars and bicycles. Oh, no, those kids are walking the wrong way. That's dangerous. I'm going to talk with these kids. Down at the clubhouse, they're talking about the safe way to walk on streets without sidewalks.
I say you can walk across the street anywhere you want, as long as you look first. And don't get squished flat by a car.
That's a fairly simple way of looking at safety. There are actual rules and laws for walking.
Yeah, but the most important one is you don't get squished flat. Who's right, Maggie? Patrick or us?
I guess in a sense, everyone's right. The main idea is to get there safely, but there are some rules to help you get there safely, like don't run out into the street without.
The second video, we show second, third and fourth grade. And it is put together by the National Safety Council along with Honda, and they developed the first humanoid robot.
What's up, Asimo? How's it going? Asimo, this is Michael. Michael, this is Asimo.
How come you dressed in the robots?
It's not a suit. I'm a real robot. My name, Asimo, stands for Advanced Step in Innovative Mobility. I'm the world's most advanced humanoid robot. I can walk forwards, backwards, and even climb stairs just like a human. So what's the first rule about crossing the street?
Stopping at curbs.
Correct. First, always stop at the curb. Then make sure no cars are coming. You want to look left.
It's clear.
Then right, to see if any cars are coming from the other direction.
That's clear, too.
Cars move fast. There might already be a new car to the left, so look left again.
Car coming.
See what I mean?
Okay, he's gone.
Kids love this. They relate to Asimo, as well as the younger children relate to Auto, who is an animated automobile. And he tells them about crossing streets. Asimo does the same thing, and he actually goes through with the children and tells them how to cross the street at an intersection with a traffic light, with a pedestrian crossing. He also teaches them how to cross, because a lot of children at schools have parked cars, he goes over the issues of how to cross when there are parked cars. So he does a number of different things, how to cross the street when there are no sidewalks. So they both cover the basic skills, one is just geared a little bit more for the different age groups. Our response has been amazing, not only from the children. We have received numerous cards. We have, I have a whole box of thank yous from children from the schools that, where we have, that have participated in our workshop. We've had nothing but a positive response back throughout the communities that we visited this year.
I think it was really nice because they had a real-life robot talk to you about safety, and you got to actually do what he said was safe. He said when there are parked cars, to make sure there are no drivers in before you cross the street.
I saw that we could, like, know what to do when there's like cars coming, not to go in the middle of the road so you don't get hurt. You have to look left, right, left, behind the shoulder, and then straight.
If they don't know how to stop at sidewalks, then I'll tell them how to. If they don't know how to cross without sidewalks, I'll tell them how to do that, too, because that's what we learned.
I think that it was good because I didn't feel like you had to look five ways, which were left, right, left, and then over your shoulder, and then ahead of you.
I thought that crossing the road was really good for little kids if they don't know what to do by crossing the road.